Okay, now we will move on to 7.5. Consideration of presentation and discussion on capacity of Lake County Water Resources Department Development and Implementation of a Clear Lake Hitch Fisheries Program. Water Resources.
Good afternoon, Board. Scott DeLeon, Public Works and Water Resources Director. I'm here with Deputy Director Dela Giannis. She will begin today with presentation, just a very short presentation about the current state of affairs with water resources or current projects and programs, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Marina Dela Giannis, Deputy Water Resources Director. As Director Scott DeLeon stated, we are here to discuss with the Board and the community the capacity of our Lake County Water Resources Department Development and Implementation of a Clear Lake Hitch/Fisheries Program. I will be using the two interchangeably. Moving forward, so I would just like to provide a brief overview of our Lake County Water Resources Department and Lake County Watershed Protection District. I'm just going to be referring to us as the department. We are the same team, just wearing different hats when we use Water Resources versus Watershed Protection District. So here on the table, on the left-hand side, you can see a few of our different programs and projects that our department oversees and coordinates. What I do not have here are the different subtasks and subprojects that we oversee that relate to the broad overview. So I will be going through these individually. So we oversee Highland Springs Recreation Area.
Thirty-five miles.
Oh, I don't know either.
There better be two.
Okay, cool, great. Glad we got that figured out. We also do conduct surface water quality monitoring, lake bed management. So with lake bed management, of course, we take in all of the permits for the construction of structures on the lake, aids to navigation, ensuring navigable waters on our beautiful Clear Lake, invasive mussel prevention, which is one of our biggest programs and one of our most important, to reduce the invasion of our Kwakwazee remussels that we do not have in Clear Lake, our Middle Creek Restoration Project, which I've spoken to the Board about a few times now, the Clean Water Program, groundwater management, for example. We also oversee our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan. That's an example of another sub-project under groundwater management, including the management and the monitoring of the additional groundwater basins throughout the county, aquatic plant management, storm water management, flood management, the NFIP Program, which is the National Flood Pain Insurance Program, overall environmental education and outreach. We have an awesome team, and if you've been lucky to hear of some of their education and outreach, you know that our staff does a mighty fine job of education, educating our community about Clear Lake and the watershed. Another big item is just meeting other state and federal requirements and mandates, levy management, and then overall watershed management and planning. So again, you can see the wide range of work that we do in our department. And then going on over to the right-hand side, I have just a few bullet points of fast facts, right? So our department is tasked with the protection and preservation of Clear Lake. Again, we are able to achieve that with the many programs and projects we oversee, as shared on the left-hand part of the slide. With this, we wear many, many hats. Our team is small but mighty. We have 11 full-time employees made up of program coordinators and invasive species program coordinators, water resources technicians, a field maintenance staff, senior water resources engineer. We are overseen by our fearless leader, Director Scott DeLeon, myself as deputy director, and then our admin staff that works very hard to communicate with the public and, of course, oversee our budgets. On that note, we oversee nine budget units in our department, with the majority of the funds coming from grant funds. Something that I don't have on the left-hand of the slide are all the grants that our staff eagerly seek out and apply for and coordinate and manage. That is a heavy lift, so I want to give them the kudos and appreciation for that. And the programs that I have asterisks here on the left-hand side, those are the programs that a lot of the funding does come from grant funds. We all understand that grant funding is not sustainable. We have a lot of requirements that we have to meet, and it takes a lot of time for our staff to apply and oversee those. The next slide here, I apologize, it is small, but I have just a few different examples of other fisheries programs that are going on throughout the state. On the left-hand side, I have the organizational chart of Sonoma County Water Agency, a great water agency in our surrounding, in a neighboring county. Their funding looks a lot different than ours. They get a lot more funding, a lot more income, and therefore they're able to house 260 employees to do a lot of the work that we do. So that just demonstrates some of the capacity that they take and that they have that we are lacking here. Another example is the Riverside Corona Resource Conservation District. They have a native fish project as well, but they work very closely with our friends at the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And then the majority of the fisheries programs that are going on and that have been going on throughout our state are led by our friends at the California Department of Fish, emphasis, and Wildlife. They have a lot of hatcheries, which are really cool. This is just a snippet of those, but we lean on them for the expertise as well. I would just also like to highlight some of our tribal communities throughout the county that do a lot of great fisheries work as well. We do work very collaboratively with those entities, along with our friends at Fish and Wildlife, state and federal level, to continue the collaboration and efforts as it relates to habitat conservation protection. But just wanted to highlight some specific examples. Now, the next slide, I apologize, I don't like a lot of text usually on slides, but I did want to make this known. What are our anticipated needs for successful implementation? So unfortunately, this is not a one-and-done. This would take a lot of time, effort, planning, resources, money that we do not currently have. So just to start out, a rough estimate, we would need at least $1 million to initiate the program. With that, we would also need long-term sustainable funding source, so not just funding to start out the program, but how can we ensure sustainability? That's a key word that we like to use in our department, ensuring that the momentum is not lost and kept. With that, we would also need additional funding to sustain our correlating department programs. I highlighted a few of those. We all know that they go hand-in-hand. Some specific examples include water quality monitoring. We've gotten some funds from grants and the state in the past. We've also recently approached the Blue Ribbon Committee to sustain our water quality monitoring program, groundwater recharge, and stream enhancement and monitoring. We know if we have no water or if the water quality is not in best condition, that's not going to be the best for our hitch friends. To onboard, we would need additional staff members. Examples include four additional staff members. We do not have a fisheries biologist. Our team is very smart, and we do have some staff members that have background in fisheries, but that is, we would need a dedicated fisheries biologist to help us start this program, along with technician and then seasonal fieldwork employees as well. Again, that would just get us going if this route were to be explored. And then with that, I would need more space to host our friends. We are currently on the third floor. We are packed like sardines in there, so we would need additional department space, storage, and lab space to house the additional staff, equipment needed, and resources to actually sustain this program. And of course, with that, we would need additional necessary equipment to conduct the monitoring, studies, and project. So as Director Scott DeLeon said, this was a super short and sweet presentation, but with that, I will go ahead and pass it to my director to add anything else that I may have missed, and if not, we'll look at the Board for future conversations.
I don't have anything else to add. I appreciate the work done on this. I guess the bottom line, and we didn't put a summary, but I'll summarize that, and that is, we're full with tasks. We're short on funding, and to add a program is, well, it's going to be a challenge, and Marina's did a good job of capturing some of the things that we think about if, as moving forward with a new program to add. From the administrative side, I would expect there'd be a new budget unit, and it just keeps compounding. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions, have any discussion, anything the Board chooses.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, heard you loud and clear on the funding, and with your help, last week I was able to testify in front of the Senate hearing about specific infrastructure, basically, but I just, just to give you an idea of one of the statements that was made from the committee was, everything that you all helped me with was said by one of your colleagues from Santa Cruz, so I just gave the insight of, well, we would like to see something called a rural set-aside, so we can have direct funding into projects like you're talking about, rather than competing with others. And Chair Caballero said, stated that, do you have any in mind? So I'm like, let's get a list together, and working with RCRC to get a list together too, so I can follow up on that and make sure we can get some projects designed out that can be a rural set-aside, hopefully. So just letting you know that.
So conceptually, what would the fisheries program look like ideally?
So I am not prepared to speak on behalf of that, so with the research, I mean, we would, we would need to set time aside to look at how that would actually work or look. Again, the research I've done, you know, there's great examples with Sonoma County Water, other reefs programs. I would look at those to, you know, why reinvent the wheel, but I would also really like to invite other interested communities to that table. I would need the expertise and insight, like I said, from the additional communities we work with, including tribal, state, and federal agency as well.
Okay. Supervisor Spatier.
I believe.
Oh, sorry. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this item, and a couple of quick questions. So I assume part of it, bringing this today, is just to be responsive. We did the emergency proclamation, and I don't know if it was unclear in the proclamation, or if maybe you took an ask. Because when I thought fisheries, we can make the call, I remember in the proclamation, we made that call to CDFW versus the department. So, and you mentioned in the slides, there were some locally-driven fisheries programs, but am I misunderstanding? I thought CDFW would have primary authority to set up and fund and operate fisheries programs, for the most part, but I may be 20 years out of whack on that. So question one is, wouldn't CDFW normally be in the driver's seat on a fisheries program, whatever that may be? And then the second ask is to the emergency proclamation itself, and one thing I'm very keyed in on is, Blue Ribbon Commission, all these great long-term projects are great, but it's, I'm still really struggling hearing actions that can be taken this year on an emergency basis to really change the fortunes of this fish. And thankfully, Mother Nature has chimed in and given us some water that hopefully would be the game changer. But we also had a call in there in the emergency proclamation that, similar to the fishery program, you may not have capacity to do, and that, we talked about possibly altering operations of the reservoirs on Adobe Creek to possibly give us some opportunity for burst flows or fish flows during rescue events. And I'm going to guess, just based on the presentation, we may not have capacity to do that either right now. So I'm getting a shake of the head there. So in both cases, you know, the Watershed Protection District and then Water Resources, we have the facilities, we have the streams, we have the things that we could move around in terms of fishery program, or even absent a fishery program this year, burst flows in the streams. So I just want to make sure I didn't miscommunicate, or that the proclamation didn't miscommunicate. We want you to be able to do things you have capacity to do, but if you tell us you don't have capacity, which seems to be the case, then I guess the next thing, which isn't presented here today, is do we start banging on CDFW's door? And I think that's a fair question for myself, because CDFW does have prime authority over what happens in the lake. They do have the revenue streams that we don't, and they do have the expertise that we don't. So to both questions, the fishery question, wouldn't CDFW be the primary agency of interest if we were to do that, and same thing with interim flows on the structures? If we needed help to do something this April, again, we have rain now, but if we get into some fish rescues and stuff like that, we need to do some burst flows out of the dam, wouldn't we need help from CDFW, Army Corps, any number of other agencies, because we don't have capacity locally? I apologize for the length of the question, but I just want to acknowledge the hard work, that you probably don't have capacity, but in the emergency proc, there were two questions, and one was fisheries in general, which is on the agenda, and the other one was interim flows, which is not.
So can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Is this agenda item and this ask so that you can implement the asks that are in the proclamation?
Well, I'm going to apologize if we've missed the, missed the target here. We were under the impression that, that there was an interest in, in the Watershed Protection District, water resources, being more engaged and having more of a presence in a hitch program. And so in order to do that, that's, that's what that last slide looks like, is if that's the direction that we're going, that's, that's what that would look like. You're absolutely correct, Supervisor Green, that the state Fish and Wildlife has been on this lake studying the hitch. They, they have the expertise, they have the funding. We certainly need to be engaged with them and, and be a part of that discussion and, and have a seat at the table. I think we have the capacity to, to devote staff to attend meetings, to be engaged, to represent the local government in those discussions, and those, those have been ongoing, and, and, you know, we're, we're getting invited to those now, and, and again, I think we're, we have the capacity to do that. To expand, we don't. There, we, in the whole course of releasing more water or doing something with the structures that we have, you've heard my testimony before, we don't know if we have the capacity to do that. I don't know what happens if we open the gate and let water out, if it even gets past the Bell Hill Low Water Crossing. I, we don't know what it will do. However, I have committed that if that's necessary, we will work collaboratively with, with the state, with the local tribes, anyone that has concerns and has a need, we will work together to see if we can make something happen. We don't know what's going to happen. We just don't. There's been a lot of talk about the Adobe Creek Conjunctive Use Project and going after funds, and, and we use the term shovel-ready a lot. A lot of the projects that we have are not shovel-ready. We have not invested in the development of plans and specifications for those construction projects, and I think that, you know, if there was ever an ask of this Board, it would be, help us with the funding to get those projects shovel-ready, recognizing that there's an interest in releasing water out of, out of the dams for additional flows. Those projects would go a long ways towards providing the storage, the additional storage to be able to do that. Again, not sure the water's going to end up downstream, but, but at least we would have the capacity to do it. So I think, I think that would be the ask. I personally, and we all work at the direction of the Board, and if this Board decides that you want to dedicate funding towards development of a fisheries program in the Department of Water Resources, then, then we'll do it. I think a better use of the funds would be to get projects engineered and get plans and specs put together and, and provide funding towards, towards those types of efforts, and utilize the state and the feds and our tribal partners in, in a fisheries program. That's my personal opinion, but we'll do whatever this Board asks us to do.
Right, so that's why I asked that question, because there were so many asks in that proclamation, but ultimately, who's doing it? Who's the team? Who's in charge? Who's managing that? If we look back on another proclamation, the tree mortality proclamation, that's the work that I do. You know, it's, I spend all of my time working on those, advocating to the state, working with other counties, pushing all, working with our partners. It's very little on staff because they don't have the capacity. And so if this is something, and we have the proclamation, but we don't have the plan to implement anything, and so I think that's what this is about, is putting together that program. How are we going to fund it, and who's going to manage it? Because that's where we are right now. We have a piece of paper that we've made a declaration on, but we don't have any way to put any of these things forward.
And Supervisor Paeska, as, you know, we're, we've started budget prep, and we're getting ready for next year, and if, if the direction to staff is participate more in these, in these intergovernmental discussions, participate, have a seat at the table, engage more, develop some plans for, for the future, we can certainly put that in as, as, as an ask. It won't be $1 million, I'll tell you that, it won't be that much, but it, there will, we'll put some numbers to additional staff time to, to do those meetings and participate in that, and, and put those plans and specs together. We can, we can certainly do that. And that would be something that you can look at, and admin can look at, and, and as part of our preliminary budget.
Okay. Supervisor Spatier.
So I appreciate you bringing this to us. This was a request to kind of make sure that our expectations were the appropriate expectations, and that you knew what those expectations were as well. So I think this is a, a good conversation to make sure that we're not all on a different page, and that we understand one another. As you know, I work closely with you guys on Middle Creek. A lot of work goes into it for a very slow amount of stuff getting accomplished, because working with the state is just a very slow task. I think that Fish and Wildlife needs fire under their feet to make this happen. They've known since 2014, 2015 that this has been listed, and yet we keep getting denied for grants that we attempt to get for projects that directly or indirectly would provide some benefit to the hitch, but it doesn't make any sense. So I know that you and I spoke earlier this morning. To me, my biggest ask is, we were told that you had a place at the table, and, and I think we need to make sure that you have a place at the table. There's this government-to-government conversation between tribes and the state. I want to make sure that we're involved in that, because what can we do to make sure the conversation keeps moving? What can we do to ensure Fish and Wildlife is held accountable for what they should be doing, things like that? And what kind of partnerships can we create? Because there's work that's listed on the other projects and programs that maybe we can benefit by enhancing those, and it helps out the hitch. And Middle Creek's one, again, that stands out. If Middle Creek can be done today, that would be a huge benefit overall to the hitch. Another part of this that I just, I don't know how to implement it, but we oftentimes want to take that responsibility of the lake and the creeks, but I don't see Yolo ever really being involved, and we need to figure out how to get them involved. And I don't know if that needs to be on us to have those discussions, which we can, or if that's on water resources, but I think that's part of the conversation as well, because they have a responsibility, and I've seen them shrug that responsibility too often in the past. I think we're lucky. We have a lot of water right now going in our creeks, sometimes a little too much, if it could come a little bit at a time rather than a whole lot at once, but I think that this year gives us a little bit of ability to figure out how we're going to attack this in a way that's not going to push aside everything else we've been working on for so long. I mean, to anticipate for some action to be taken by April, figuring out where the funding's coming from, even if there is a grant available, we're lucky if we get that money by September, October. So I think being part of the general conversation that is occurring, and if we don't have a seat, then please come back so we can request a seat from the Board of Supervisors. I want to make sure that you are given that voice in that, in that situation. But I think Yolo County Flood Control and just being a part of that is the two big things that I would like for us to be involved in, because I don't know how else it is that we can truly be involved, other than just being the squeaky wheel.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, just wanted to clarify. Earlier, I spoke about the rural set-aside. I was referring to projects you showed, and how getting some of that, you know, implemented or even funded some way, shape, or form, and also, I think you, you had mentioned too, getting them shovel-ready. So that's, that's what my comment was about. It was mainly to get the department in a position to have the capability to do some of the other stuff, rather than kind of them all sitting in these, you know, like, like a task list that's like 70% done, 60% done. We can get you to the finish line so some of that can move forward. So that's, that's what I was referring to earlier, and I think this, the fishery, I think with the partnerships with tribes would be very helpful as well, and I, you know, I think this is a, this is a good presentation, and I think it coincides with what we talked about during the proclamation. I definitely don't want it to be burdensome, but I, you know, I'm willing to do what I can, especially in the Blue Ribbon Committee, to, you know, help with whatever I can, so. And the Yolo two-by-two, I think we should just set one up, yeah.
So how much, to start attending all the meetings, how, what, how is that going to impact staff current, at current levels?
So that's a good question. We have been actively engaged, you know, for a while now. We've been participating in the conservation strategy since it started, when I started with the county in 2019. So we do have those times tracked. We can get a rough idea going into our staff time. They make great comments in our time tracking, so we know which meetings they're attending, so we can get a rough estimate. A lot of that, you know, we eat the, we eat the costs of that. It's important for us to be at the table, so we make sure that our staff is at the table, so we can definitely bring some rough numbers of how much time usually spends, is spent on behalf of our staff to participate in this different hitch dialogue.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, I think it's important we have a seat at the table, but it's also, we want whoever's sitting at the table to be empowered, not to just sit there and absorb technical information, but feel empowered to share things that we want, and so I guess, do we want one seat at the table? Do we want two? Do we want science, and do we want policy there? And I don't know what the current composition of the task force is, seems to be kind of scientific, but there's probably some policy questions being asked on there now. And to Supervisor Spatier's point about CDFW needing a fire, yeah, probably. It's a dense beast. But back to the issue of a fishery program, so I realize it's a heavy lift, and yet, what a great opportunity we've been given. We actually have hitch running in the streams. We're not out of the woods. We could have a drought later this spring. We could have three years of drought, you know, at the end of this year. And despite talking about this for months now, neither state nor federal nor local agency really has capacity to do something this year on an emergency basis that, that could have substantial impact on turning the fortunes of this fish around. And even if we can't boot up a fisheries program on short notice, can we even do something like shelter in place, you know, rather than just scooping them up and tossing them back in the lake and hoping for their best? Are there certain impoundments on the streams we can look at? Are they actually running in some of our reservoirs? You know, I, I just saw that there's a bass fishing tournament scheduled at Highland Springs. I don't know if there's any hitch in Highland Springs. So for, so I'm just thinking out loud here. So for budgeting purposes, I think a fisheries program is still a great idea, and by the, thank you, Director DeLeon, you know, I want to give credit where credit is due. It's a great idea. I mean, we can budget a cost share. We probably don't have capacity to be lead agency, but we could certainly be supportive of, of an effort, whether it's led by CDFW, whether it could be led, in fact, by our native sovereign nations locally. They may be more nimble than even the state can be at this point. They may have funding streams that, they have ready access that we don't this year. So, so I know you're looking for direction. So I guess just for budgeting, I do like the idea of a fisheries program. Clearly, you don't have bandwidth to operate it fully, or even a majority of it locally, but if this, if we're going to ask the state to spring one up, I imagine a cost share will, will come into the discussion, if only because their funding's going to be limited, and, and that same task force that does have tribal representation, maybe we can talk about some cost shares with them too. So, so to the specific issue of a fisheries program, I guess we can just, there's consensus here that, yeah, we clearly don't expect, given the limited capacity described here today, that you would take this on all by yourselves. That said, still think it's a good idea if we can provide some type of support, whether it's just being at all the meetings and trying to advocate for the idea of a fishery. If it comes down to numbers and you want to come back and discuss cost share, maybe that would be something we could do. So I guess I can just thank you. Didn't, again, if there was misunderstanding, didn't, didn't want to ever communicate. Didn't, again, if there was misunderstanding, didn't, didn't want to ever communicate that we anticipated this to fall solely on you, if only because I didn't explain my understanding that I do hold the state as having primary authority and the primary ability to act expeditiously as the state should this year on, uh, developing fishery capacity for the hitch.
So I think we're not quite in a position to develop a full program, but what if there was a position added that could, um, act as a liaison, could advocate to state agencies and could start looking at the programs and looking at grants, um, as a first step? Because, you know, this is, we've seen this time and again, we can't accomplish much in just a handful of minutes and hours here and there. But as we have a climate officer now, if we have a dedicated staff person, uh, as a first step in developing this out, uh, I think we could handle that probably. I don't know. We'll have to talk to Stephen. Um, but that's something that I am willing to look at and we can look at a budget item for that, um, what that position looks like. Um, but really have that be, uh, an advocate liaison, project development, grant writing, all of those things. I'm sure one person can handle it.
Part-time.
Part-time, yeah. Extra help. There you go. Uh, but that's something that I am willing to look at. I just, I, I know your pen's up, so can take the next comment? Go ahead.
So my, my comment on that is I think being part of that larger committee can tell us what are the next steps that can eat, make immediate impact? And maybe this is not the next step that can make immediate impact because there was constant, um, I guess contradictions of what would be the best approach to deal with the hitch? Um, do we ask these people to change their behavior? Do we ask to, uh, take out some of the, uh, silt, uh, and, and allow for the, uh, water to flow better? I mean, there was lots of different options and, and topics that were brought up. I think we have to figure out what are the top three things or what's the top thing before we start spending any kind of money on something that may not be the number one thing for us to look at. So I, I would suggest we make sure we sit down in the, in that committee in, in the capacity to bring information, share information and voice our, our opinion and direction of how we feel it should go. But I think that the, the collaborative can provide better guidance than a single conversation here. Uh, one of the things that I, I was thinking about, and I get it that UC Davis is definitely involved within the Blue Ribbon Committee, uh, but I also know Humboldt State is a fish biology kind of university, I guess, sorry. Cal, Cal Poly Humboldt or whatever they're called these days, sorry. Um, they just changed. But, uh, are there any state university fisheries, uh, projects? Because they're heavily involved, uh, with fish biology. Are they involved to the point that fish and wildlife is involved? Do they, do they have a collaborative, uh, agreement between themselves and, and, uh, fish and wildlife? I'd love to know how, uh, what else we can bring in. Um, cause while UC Davis does bring a large, uh, scientific, uh, community with them, I know that Humboldt is very specific about fish biology. Uh, so I'd love to see, uh, if we can bring in where they can do their research and they could also help us out with getting something accomplished that we're looking to get accomplished. And I also feel that that committee, once they recognize the number one thing we need to get accomplished as a collaborative, the state is always looking for collaborative work whenever we're submitting grant applications. So rather than submitting grants for, on the behalf of County of Lake, we may be able to submit grants on the behalf of this collaborative that includes tribal government, that includes fish and wildlife and so on and so forth, to ensure that this is what we've all agreed that needs to happen. So that, that, that to me is the steps that need to be taken to ensure we don't just try to offer a solution. It's the solution that everyone agrees on, uh, rather than not.
But I, I do, I mean, there's an incredible amount of asks that you just laid out and I, I think they're, um, you know, worthy, that we need to go, work in that direction, but we can't ask staff to put that on top of their duties. And that's why I think maybe adding a position where we have one point of contact might be the best approach.
Would you like to see that in our preliminary budget?
I would, but I need consensus.
Well, it sounds like you said you were already going to those meetings because I thought in our conversation that they were saying, yes, we'll, we'll offer you a position. So were you just joining the meeting as kind of a public member, but you're from Lake County? Or were you an actual member in that meeting?
So I'm not quite sure how the actual membership works. We were invited, um, from CDFW, Felipe, who has been to the board, um, regarding updates of the hitch. They did invite us to have dialogue and we have given updates on behalf of the Water Resources Department. So we have had discussions with those, with the, um, the task force that is developed by CDFW and, uh, the tribal entities. And then we also participate in the conservation strategy, which is being led by the US Fish and Wildlife.
And, and just to finish on, on my comment, I feel like my asks are asks to the committee, not asks to you specifically. Um, because again, reaching out to Humboldt State, what are you asking them? Well, I think the, that, that committee that you would go to, uh, would ask them. If it, if it requires, uh, I, I, my personal opinion is I love services to our community more so than putting in new positions to just sit down in a meeting. Um, but if that is what you feel is necessary in order to fulfill what we're asking you and, and setting our expectations, then obviously we shouldn't be asking for something you can't commit to. And so if it needs to come back a, as a budget item and this has been implemented, then I would say yes. Um, but at this moment, my only ask is be part of the committee, be part of the conversation. The committee can write the grant, not you. Um, I mean, we have the state at the table. Uh, they need to be helping us as much as possible. I hope that helps.
Just to clarify, so a seat at the table, we could have multiple seats. So if I understand right, and I could be wrong, but last time I spoke with Felipe, it's like, you got the seat. My question was, do you ever want to hear from policy people? Cause again, we don't want to put you and anyone else in an awkward position saying, I represent the county on this, that and the other, unless we've met here and given you clear direction. Like if we gave clear direction today, hey, at the next meeting, say, you know what? We talked about a fisheries program. We can't do it all by ourselves, but our board said there's intense interest in it. What do you guys think? You want to start brainstorming this stuff? But again, it's a CDFW-led committee. They don't have to listen to what we say. So I guess, I guess what, uh, input when we do go to the next meeting would be, you know, are, are they limiting it just to technical work and they don't want to hear about policy things like, hey, we really want to get started on a fisheries program. What do you think? Um, or are they open to having, uh, either a staff person like Chair Pyska suggesting or even a policy person like a board member, uh, sit in from time to time, um, just to do the occasional fire lighting, as Bruno put. Um, so, uh, so I was a little unclear on, on the latest composition of the committee. If it's all, if it's all technical all the time and no policy work is being done, great. Um, but I don't know that we need to go to each and every one of those meetings because nothing is going to get done until we see that clearly Kitch strategy someday. Um, but if they're open to the idea that, again, we still have an emergency, what can we get done this year? And even if they've scratched their heads for the last three months, if we can get them to finally commit to, uh, a single plan of action and to Supervisor Sabatier's point, maybe they all agree. Fishery, great idea. Yeah. It's certainly popular here in our community. You know, a one thing, one reason I want to pursue it is just because it's one thing everyone seems to agree on, you know? And so, um, we want to build on that unity. We want to build on that collaboration and get things going to the extent we can. Whereas there may not be universal buy-in on some of the things, uh, you know, going on, going on with the water boards and stuff like that. So I guess I need a better understanding of what the committee is actually doing. Are they focused solely on technical work? Are they open to doing some policy initiatives so that we can, again, still an emergency? Yes, it's raining, but if there's anything we can do this year, this spring, this summer to possibly scrape some, uh, uh, fish populations into, uh, places of shelter or safety or just DNA preservation, whatever it is. Fish are running in the stream right now. What can we do to take advantage of that blessing and, uh, take, you know, leverage it to our advantage as opposed to just watching it, doing some rescues and just doing what we've done for the last five, six years as this population has tanked?
And I will just like to add that on that note, I'm more than happy to reach out to my contact Felipe to get some input from him. I definitely don't want to overstep, you know, and I want to stay in my lane and I can't speak on behalf of that committee, um, since I was invited to discuss, but I'm more than happy to start that dialogue with, um, with my contact coordinating that committee and get some input from them. And if they would like to come to the board to provide clarification or any input, more than happy to have our department sponsor such item, um, as we've done with similar items in the past.
That actually might not be a bad idea. We'll, we'll, when we get back, we'll make contact with them and, and, uh, you know, perhaps it might not be a bad idea to bring them here, uh, so that they can hear, hear this, you know? They can hear what this board's interest is and, and, um, but we'll, we'll work on that and, and if it, uh, looks like a good idea to bring them back, we will. And, uh, and if it's something that we can, uh, put together for our preliminary budget, we'll do that as well.
Use your pen up again, David. Okay.
Uh, my comment was I, I, I think that water resources, whether it's an extra body or the bodies you currently have in your department is capable of representing the Board of Supervisors, uh, in both technical and policy in the sense that you know this, this, um, topic more than any of us. Uh, you have an intimate knowledge of this topic, uh, maybe not specifically hitch, but at least water resources and, and things directly involved with it. Um, and that no board of supervisor is going to be able to, uh, make statements of this is what we're going to do and neither are you. Uh, if there are policy ideas that come out of the conversation, then at that point you either bring it back to us or you work with a couple of, uh, a, a board of supervisors in order to polish it up and then bring it to us eventually, uh, that's your choice. But I, I, I have faith that that's what you're there to do and you're not just there to have a warm body and a seat, uh, that you're paying attention to the conversation and, and trying to figure out how best for us to position ourselves to benefit and to collaborate best with them. Uh, I, I just, I feel like adding a political position in this type of committee, in my opinion, is, is not a, uh, it's not a good ask, uh, for them as, as they're supposed to be apolitical in those type of, uh, situations.
Yeah. You're our subject matter experts.
And the only, the only thing I would add to that is every now and again, they do have to come back. And so, uh, we were accidentally there at the, at the summit. We were kind of a last minute addition and, and yet that, uh, that meeting was so seminal in that it, it, it was the genesis. It was the seed of the idea for the emergency proclamation. So it can't, it can't be all, uh, can't be all, all technical all the time. There is a time and place for the, the policy people to get involved. So, um, but, but I hear what you're saying. And I, I very much like Chair Pyska's idea of the budget unit. There is going to need to be staff support, whatever we're doing, whether it's for the fishery, other stuff. So, um, if we can get consensus for that today, I'd love to see that.
Okay. Got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, wait a minute. We did not open it up to the public.
She waited this whole time. Joan Moss, I've been looking at the hitch today, yesterday, the day before. Uh, Dave Lowry told me that the state board was here looking at the hitch, that tribal people were rescuing hitch that were caught in puddles and canals and releasing them. Um, I think that it, a lot of it is already happening and I believe that the tribes and you have some, um, policies set in place that we're all going to work together. And I feel a lot of sympathy for these fish. They're a lot bigger than they were when I saw them the last time. They haven't had any water to, to swim upstream. Um, it's like a lot of us that are caught in the snow, in the rain. What do we do now? And some of them actually make it through the culverts and rest on the other side. I think we need to analyze the water that the fish have been living in. We need to find out who put what in the water that keeps the babies from growing. I think it needs to be collaborative with the USGS and everyone else. But I applaud your, your enthusiasm and we need to get together to do something. And I will never forget these fish swimming around, like talking to each other, what do we do now? Because things aren't the same they were, as they were years ago when they first came into being. We've done a lot to mess up the water and to obstruct the normal flow of hitch. We need to try to correct that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Anyone in Zoom?
Betsy did have her, Betsy did have her hand up, um, but she put it down.
Okay. All right. Then I'll close public input. If there's nothing further, then thank you so much for coming today and thanks for following up with this. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.